I'd like to call our meeting to order.
Good evening, I'm going to have, um, everybody please rise and we're going to have our invocation. Reverend George Lewis from the First United Methodist Church in Howell is going to give our invocation. And following that, we're going to have the Legacy Leadership Team, and I'm going to introduce you right after the invocation, and we're going to do the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. It was great, Gillian. Gracious God, we do begin by simply thanking you. In this month of Thanksgiving, Lord, make us ever mindful of the things we take for granted, and we enjoy each and every day. Even today, as we realize that we are a thankful nation, that we have the freedom to leave our houses and to go to the polling places and to make our voice known. Without any harassment and without any pressure, we're free to voice our opinion and to vote for those things and those people that mean so much to us. And, Lord, we thank you for that gift. But, Lord, we also want to thank you, as we remember this weekend, Veterans Day. We thank you for those who have gone before us, who've served faithfully in the armed services. And, Lord, right now, we just take a moment to bring to mind those, right now, that we know, from this community, from our family and friends, who are serving in the armed services right now, maybe here in the States or maybe around the world. We just want to take a moment and think of them at this time and pray for them, that you would watch over them. Gracious God, for your goodness, we are thankful. We thank you for this opportunity this evening. We ask a blessing upon these leaders in the community, that you would always be granting them wisdom. And, Lord, most of all, whether there is agreement or disagreement, that you would give them the gift of unity, that they would know that they are one in leadership over this community, seeing that which is most important and guiding this community forward. We ask this all in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Lewis. And now I'd like to introduce, from again, Heartland's Legacy High School team, we have Zoe Walker, Shelby Puckett, Dylan Wainwright, Scott Patterson, Shannon Herbst, Jacob Parks, Addison Jarrett, and Abby Sowaski. Thanks for joining us this evening. And what to do with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Regular meeting for November 5th, 2013. Have a quick, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Suverizer. Treasure Horning?
Here.
Trustee Kalani?
Here.
Trustee Jermaine?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Clerk Hopkins here, Supervisor Fouten?
Here.
We have Core of the Board, we also have President, Township Manager, James Wickman.
Thank you. Item number five is approval of our meeting agenda.
Support or motion?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Treasure Horning. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number six is call of the public. Anybody at call of the public this evening? Mr. Dumas, good evening.
Good evening. Good to be here. Always good to be here. I wanted to stop by and visit, just briefly, to share with you some of the things that are going on in the county. You know, we're in the process of working on our budget, as I'm sure you're working on yours. And trying times for all of us. We don't print money at the townships or at the counties, so we have to make ends meet or we just put ourselves out of business. I brought up a series of, a list that shows all of the activity that the Sheriff's Department has had throughout the county year-to-date, and I see that in some areas, Heartland has been a very exciting township. On, in April, for instance, down at the bottom there, where we listed the arrests. We put the bad guys away here in this county. That's a very important thing for us. We believe that if we don't provide good public safety for the citizens of our community, that all the other things we do in government are pretty meaningless. So, I want to assure you that we're always there for the citizens of this community. Sheriff's Department, in spite of some views to the contrary, will always have a road patrol. And it's a very vital part of what we do here in county government. And everyone that I know of depends on it and is very pleased with how we operate. So, do you have any questions on that large sheet?
I do.
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I think our Sheriff's Department's a fantastic organization. I think they do a great job. Sheriff Bazzata is fine sheriff. I do have a couple of questions. There are a number of the communities listed here, and I assume these are just all the township ones. Is that correct?
Yes, these are all of the governmental units that the Sheriff's Department is responsible for.
Well, I just want to call, you called our attention to Heartland, and I want to, I'm looking at Brighton Township and Howell Township. Significant number of calls for service and arrests in those particular communities.
Genoa.
And Genoa in particular. And when we look at the services that, how does this compare to when Heartland had its own service, you know, we were paying for extra service?
Sure.
How does this compare to that? Because those are the three top communities that I'm familiar with that did not have their contracts with Heartland, like Heartland and Tyrone Township had.
Genoa, the township that you mentioned, is by and large the most, makes the most demands of our Sheriff's Department. And I have some pie charts here that I want to hand out, too. I wish I had one for everyone, but my printer ran out of color.
You could forward over to James, and he can make copies and email them to us.
Yeah.
That would be fine.
I'll give you all the copies I have.
That's fine.
James, can you show them on the camera?
You might be able to do it right on the camera there.
Do you need some of the showing out there?
Yeah, I think what we should, we get the information tonight, and then if we have questions at our next meeting, we can talk about the information that's being passed out.
I guess my concern is, is a matter of, we have gotten inquiry, inquiries from our community about sheriff's service since we have not renewed the contract. It appears we're still receiving significant assistance from Sheriff's Department without that contract. Would you agree with that?
If you look at the, if you look at, under Heartland, the calls for service, you'll see that, that the first quarter in which you had a contract, the numbers are...
Okay, I see what you're saying. They're significant, yeah, they're...
So you can see that difference?
About a hundred to a hundred and fifty different.
Right. And that, and what you'll see on this pie chart is that the amount of time, the amount of the total time that the department is busy across the county. That amount here in the township is less on a percentage basis.
Okay. I just, I'm curious, but does, does the sheriff have a contract with Genoa Township? They've had over fifty-two-hundred, fifty-two-hundred, almost fifty-three-hundred calls, and on average have almost, almost five to six hundred calls each month.
Right.
Even at our peak, when we had our own service, we topped out in January at about four-seventy, four-hundred-and-seventy calls. I guess that's the issue that I've said, I don't think going back probably the better part of eight years now, that I thought that road patrol probably should be canceled throughout the township, throughout the county. And if any township wants additional service, they should contract with the sheriff's office and keep it at a price that, at what the, what the cost is, instead of trying to negotiate, you know, eight hours here, ten hours there, twenty-four hours, whatever. Because until you do that, or you create an incentive, there's no reason for, why would a community want to sign on if you're going to be, if the road patrol's going to be provided anyway?
Right. The difficulty with canceling road patrol is that that would abandon the basic...
There is, you do know that there's no statutory responsibility to provide road patrol in the county.
Right.
There isn't one, like there is for maintaining a jail. Now, they did this in Oakland County. Oakland County basically told their townships, you want road patrol, you got to pay for road patrol. Those conversations, I know that the chairperson of the county board has spoken with Mike McCabe, the under sheriff in Oakland County. There have been numerous discussions with other counties, I think, on how they would deal with it. I just, I think there needs to be some thinking outside the box of how we might want to do this, because I don't want to lose road patrol, but I also don't, I'm looking at these numbers, and there's no reason for Heartland to enter into a contract at this time. Seriously, I just, I don't see it. Especially when Genoa Township's getting the same service we would be getting, and it's at fifty-two-hundred calls that they're responding to. I don't understand why that is.
Well, it's because these are all calls for service, and there are more calls for service in Genoa Township than there are here.
Okay.
Higher operation, there's a whole different demographic, there are large box stores, there's everything, everything in that township is different from what we have here.
But you just said that in Heartland, our first quarter, January, February, March, we were still under contract. We had over four-hundred, almost five-hundred calls in January, and it, and it was reduced. And then it, the reflection shows that since April, when we stopped our contract, that the calls for service went down significantly.
Correct.
That either A, we don't have any more calls, and that's good, because we don't have any, maybe we don't have the crime anymore in the township, or B, it's a reflection that we didn't have the service, no longer had the service. So which, I don't know which one it is.
Joe, I would like to table this and add this as an agenda item in the future.
That would be a good idea. I just think that people can throw, people can give me a lot of numbers, but I'm going to, I'm going to look at them, but I'm just really concerned about, when I see what all the other townships, how this is going to affect, how it's going to affect our township.
Right. Fair enough. Perhaps we can have you at a future meeting, and we can be one of these items, and we can have the information in front of us.
Certainly.
And it would be, the best scenario would be, have a year-to-year comparison or a year-to-two-years-ago comparison, and have those numbers in front of us, so we could...
We can certainly do that.
And you made a statement tonight, that you said that we will always have road patrol.
As far as I'm concerned, we will, you know?
Okay.
I've always held that position, Bill, you know, that, to me, that is, that is the most important thing government at this level can do, is to protect its citizens. If you can't do that, all the other stuff doesn't matter.
Well, and our numerous, we've had numerous conversations on this, and we would just like to be part of that discussion as it goes forward.
Yes, and I appreciate your sincere interest, all of you, in this issue.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Joseph.
Anybody else interested in a call of the public? Being none, I'll have item number seven, approval of our consent agenda.
So move. Support.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is pending business. We have no pending business this evening. Number nine is new business. Number nine A is winter snow, paw maintenance contract. And I'll turn this over to Manager Wickman.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. This agenda item is fairly straightforward. It's a continuation of, an extension of existing costs. It just exceeds the dollar amount eligible for consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions the board may have. Otherwise, we're recommending the two-year extension at holding the price.
If we always had a two-year contract, or is it always a one-year contract?
I think only the last couple of times has been a two-year. I think previous, with a different vendor, we were doing a year-by-year contract.
I'll move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to execute the winter maintenance contract with Beauchamp Lawn Care and Landscape Supply, Inc.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Hopkins, second by Trustee Kalani. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number nine B is our village plan. This is a plan that we started years ago, went back to the Planning Commission for further discussion, and to the committee, I believe, and I'm going to turn this topic over to Clerk Hopkins, as he was instrumental in bringing this to us this evening.
James, you're not putting anything up?
I can, if you'd like.
The, this plan is pretty much the, or it is really the same plan that you saw two years ago, prior to us having a public meeting at the Music Hall. Basically, now we just have gone back to the committee and the Planning Commission to formalize those recommendations and put this forward to be included on the Township's Safer Road and Pathways Plan. There's a little bit more narrative that the planning director put in the memo of the Planning Commission on short-range, immediate goals, near-term goals, and long-term goals. And there's some, some rough estimates that he asked Huber Roth and Clark to put to it, and those things are all included in your packet.
Anything in particular you want me to pull up, or?
The plan itself, I think, is probably the...
So this is, I was, is this going to be phased in? Like, things, they'll start off with, like, I know that the drainage issue is the main, a significant issue that, that has been brought out by HRC that needs to be addressed.
Well, the, the Planning Commission and the, the Village Plan Committee wasn't as bold as trying to say what the Township Board would decide to do in what...
In what order?
We put together a plan and, you know, put it forward to be included with the discussions of the Road and Pathway Group. And certainly, there's logical things that would seem to need to be first. A lot of it has to do, too, with how much money there is, you know? I think the number that Huber Roth and Clark put on the whole project was like $1.6 million.
It is.
If you had $1.6 million, well, then you'd logically probably start with the drainage, because you can't do too much on top of the drainage without having to tear things up. But if you have smaller, a smaller amount to put towards it, then maybe you look at some basic sidewalk improvements, some additions of sidewalks, maybe you look at the intersection, things that could be done that wouldn't, down the road, have to be undone once you get to the drainage, so, but we didn't.
And if I can, just reinforce what you said, and really, we have to preface this always, that this is, for all intents and purposes, a master plan, a twenty-year vision of what we'd like to see happen if everything went perfectly and money weren't an option. So the question, of course, then becomes funding and trying to pursue those ideas. What we never want to make the mistake of is, is anybody, whether, understanding that this is a plan that there, we are going to be implementing for sure. We obviously are going to try to incorporate some of the things into the Road, Safer Roads and Pathways Plan, but really, you know, whether it's pursuing grant dollars or leveraging, you know, some other projects, having the plan, the vision of what the final outcome looks like will be important in those steps, but this is not by any means a, it will be built next year type of a thing. I know you understand that, but really, everybody, that's an important part of the message when we talk about this.
I assume that the, the task force will look at, look at, this will ultimately become part of that, that review by the task force as well, correct?
The Safer Roads and Pathways?
Safer Roads, yes.
Yes. I think that was the goal.
And so, that, will it be that task force that will sort of prioritize projects?
Potentially. I mean, not every aspect of this project touches road or pathway. There are other elements, but they, most of it does, and they would consider that in putting together the plan. Again, that plan being somewhat of a, of a vision, a master plan, and then deciding, they're charged with going deeper and trying to identify what is feasible, funding options, and trying to pursue those. And I expect that part of this, if not a big part of it, could be a part of that plan.
There's also a portion probably that stands separate from, from that, in the information that Dave put together, there's also an aspect of looking at the signage ordinance in the village, as we've all had discussions with in the past, that something different needs to happen there. That's something that probably stands separate from the road and pathway at a portion of this, that I would expect the Planning Commission to look at once we get through the thirty amendments that are first on our list from the new zoning ordinance that we adopted.
All the school property is exempt from special assessments?
They have to consent to a special assessment, and they won't. It's municipality. Usually, sometimes you can get them to contribute, depending on if they are experiencing a problem, and it solves another problem, and that's another way to get a governmental entity. The way it works in Livingston County, from talking to Brian Johnkey, the Drain Commissioner, when it comes to county contribution, they kind of look at the at-large assessment for road drainage as kind of the county's portion of, to it. So let's say there's a county or state road that's affected by this during the assessment process. They will look at a contribution in that sense for, for road drainage. Here, I wouldn't know what, I wouldn't know what they're, what they're proposing to do in terms of that. And then typically, a township might want to take on an at-large portion as well, and then the rest would be applied to the property owners. That's generally how it works.
We do pay an at-large portion.
Yeah, probably a significant. Have to be careful on that. I know we do do an at-large for operation and maintenance. If we're going to redo the drain, it may be in our interest to do a special assessment district under Chapter Twenty, process we were looking at, at the, on M-59 going...
Drain number five, yeah.
Yeah, that proposed one. That would probably could be a way to, certainly an easier way when we're looking at, at making repairs or replacing that drain system. So a much easier process than going through the older parts or the drain code. Which is my two cents on that. I don't do that work anymore.
You forgot everything.
Yeah, I forgot everything.
That would be a huge project, redoing that drain.
Well...
You're going right, right between all those houses, underneath houses?
Underneath downtown buildings.
Underneath downtown buildings.
You can do some, it depends on, yeah.
If that clay tile had to be put in before that was even built, then. Wasn't it?
Most likely, there was probably, when they built that drain, there was probably an old stream, and they built it in the bed of the stream, and look at that curve, when you, when you think, or Matt? So there was probably like a branch, another branch of the Oar Creek there.
That makes sense.
And then they just enclosed it.
Because that was all wet land back there to begin with.
Most likely, yeah. You never know.
So what's the, what's, this is just going to be discussed then at our...
Yeah, just to, basically, the board's accepting the plan and, you know...
I think it's a good plan.
Charging the task force with incorporating it into their study.
Is this on our website?
Um, not, I don't know if it is yet.
Right now, it has been in the past.
If the board accepts it, then certainly we would...
I think we should, accept this plan, which should be on our website.
I'll move to approve the village plan incorporated to the Safer Roads and Pathways Plan.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Treasure Horning. Any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number ten's the board reports. We are in our first meeting in November. Trustee Kalani?
I have no report.
Trustee Harper?
I just have a quick comment to, Commissioner Dumas, just when he comes back, just, you mentioned the amount of arrests that we have. Do those figures include appearance tickets? Because typically, an appearance ticket is considered an arrest. Okay, it just, you don't have, I'm sure you don't have that information out, but would you do come back if you could find that out for us? I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think, Dave, what we'll do with that is we'll get a list of questions that may, board members may have, so you can get that information ahead of time. Thanks.
That's it.
Trustee Jermaine?
Just wanted to bring to the attention of the rest of the board members that we've been having good cooperation with the township staff in terms of corrective actions and so on required at the Hero Center, formerly known as the old Township Hall. And you may have seen it in the operations report, but for our next fiscal year, we are anticipating replacing the windows in that building, and they've already been getting quotes for that work. Just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Thank you. How's, is, what's the progress of the fire safety people that were going to come in and start doing some classes?
Yeah, they're, they've got all of the computer equipment installed, and they're doing some data testing. Joe can probably speak to this better than me, but the, in our last Hero Board meeting, Adam indicated that they're starting with the test program with some of the just local, our own township staff, and maybe Brighton somewhere close by. And, but the system is operational, and they anticipate bringing in outside people relatively soon. There's one big prop that they're still expecting from General Motors. They're going to have a full-size pickup cab brought into the building as part of the work.
Is that one of those offices?
Yes. It'll be quite an operation to get it in the building.
Maybe they can buy some new windows for that side of it, put it in there. Thank you. Trustee Petrucci?
I can just elaborate a little bit more on that for Matt. The Blue Card Officers Training is in functioning now. They've already had some classes, and what they're doing is they're starting out with classes for our own fire department, and then they're moving to other fire departments within the county. The officers from around the county will be coming here, I think, next week, starting next week. They've gotten phone calls from other counties around the state already to have their officers come here, so they just want to get all the bugs out of the system before they have other townships and other counties coming to here for the training. So it's up and running right now, and they're still waiting for that, that... So it's up and running right now, and they're still waiting for that, that donation from General Motors that's being built. So it'll be a few weeks before we get that. So that's what's going on with the Blue Card System for the Fire Officers Training. I, you should have received a memo from me today with regards to a new project that I'd like to start here in the township. I would like to get the board's consensus on this project, get their go-ahead. I have asked some key people in the township to be on a committee to start and work on a project to enhance Settlers Park. Committee would be in charge of putting together a plan and implementing that plan for memorial in the park. We really don't know what we're going to call it, we haven't had a meeting, of course, until you say it's okay to do it. And if you say it's okay to do it, we'll have a meeting starting tomorrow night at five o'clock here at the Township Hall. And there has been some discussion on whether they want to make a typical Veterans Memorial or something larger than that that would consist of a Veterans Memorial and possibly some local historic features as well. The project would be funded mainly by private donation and grants, and I say mainly because I'm hoping the township would find some money in their budget next year to contribute to it, especially if we get this thing moving as quickly as we want to and obtain a grant to get it started. Bob West, the Heartland Township Public Works Director, has agreed to help us with a package for an application for a grant that's currently available. That deadline on that grant is December 31st, so we don't have a lot of time between now and then to put something together to submit for that grant. But I like deadlines because that, that's the way you get things done. So if you have any questions with regards to the memo I sent out, I'd be glad to answer them if I can, and then I would like to at least get your consensus on whether to move forward or not with it.
Any questions for Joe on this?
I think it's a good idea. It's a nice project to get, get started on. I mean, it, I think coincides with some of the things we want to do in the Settlers Park regarding park benches and some other things. So I think with the excitement of doing something like this could also generate some excitement on, on park benches, those who want to maybe donate to have a park bench put in the memory of somebody or something like that. We could kind, kind of move forward with that as well.
When would you like to start the project? Would it all depend on the grant money and?
Well, we're, we, you know, we'll have our first meeting tomorrow at five o'clock. There won't be a deciding after that meeting. First of all, Bob's going to show us where in the park, the township would like to see this, this, this memorial. And then we need to put together some ideas on what we're looking for to present to the, the people for the grant money along with the application. Has to be a rendition of it. It doesn't have to be exactly what we're looking for, but then we need to submit something to them to get this grant. And so we'll be moving on a fast pace between now and the middle of December, and I'm sure that once the committee finds out more of what we need to do, we probably, hopefully will meet at least once a week between now and then, if not more if we can, depending on the members of the committee. Because I did express to them that this is going to be a fast-paced first month because of that grant. We'd like to get all of that grant if we can. So we would be starting on tomorrow, to answer your question.
And not to, I did hear, when, that the, the grant is already starting to rewards, award some of those grants, so that tells me that sooner is better as far as their willingness to take a look at it.
The, what it is, is that pipeline, what's the name of that?
Enbridge.
Enbridge. Yeah, the, the pipeline, they have offered a grant to each of the communities where they put their piping through, up to $25,000. So that would be a great figure to start with.
So I think there's an advantage of getting in sooner than later is what I suggest.
Any, board members have any other questions? Anybody opposed to the project? I think you have our endorsement.
All right.
Good stuff. Look to you and your committee.
Thank you.
All right. See, we have, Clark Hopkins?
I just had a question for James. Now, I, I would imagine that if it's not over with yet, it's, will be the HIA season and, and soccer season. After those complete, are you guys going to have like a wrap-up meeting with those groups, find out what things worked, what things didn't work, and?
Yes, scheduling of that meeting is pending, yep.
I think he's already had a scheduled meeting with HIA, or is having one with HIA?
I think he's at least attending their next board meeting, and then trying to do probably a separate meeting with the stakeholders.
That's it for me.
Treasurer Horning?
Nothing this evening.
I have nothing this evening. We'll move on to a manager's report.
Thank you, Ms. Supervisor. You have my operational report, and I just would highlight a couple of things from that. Of course, this Friday for the retreat, twelve to six, assuming we don't take too many rabbit trails, but just ask that, we'll, we'll just have maybe some light refreshments, but meals would be before and after. And I did update the SWOT analysis, so you want to take a look at that prior to Friday to be prepared for the discussion. And then, just a reminder, offices will be closed on Monday for Veterans Day. Staff is reporting for in-service and department projects, but, and then on the eleventh is actually a tentative date for the safer roads and pathways kickoff meeting. And we're, got the agenda just about set for that. Looking forward to getting orientation, get everybody working together, and we'll continue to meet after that. And happy to answer any other questions from operational reports or otherwise.
That committee for safer roads and pathways is Clark Hopkins, Joe Kellany?
I don't think it's Joe Kellany.
Glenn?
Matt and Glenn.
Oh, okay, I thought you were on that. You're not on that. I'm glad I brought it up then. So everyone knows who's on that committee?
Yep.
All right.
I saw that in the report.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions for James? Be none, we'll move on to number twelve A, which is Clyde Land Offers. These were the, one of the properties that the township bought on behalf of the sewer district that went delinquent. This one went delinquent, I think, two years ago, and we have, currently have two offers on that. And at our administration meeting this week, I suggested to James that we talk to somebody that's in the realty business and give us some advice as to how we should go forward. So we, we follow the, the lay of the, the lay of the land, as they would say when it comes to realty transactions.
Yeah, just, I mean, this is a board discussion, we need to get some feedback and direction on where to go from here, was a good suggestion to bring in. Jeff, you want to introduce yourself real quick, just to be acquainted?
My name is Jeff Greenison. I'm a principal of rescue. We were in front of you about a year ago and responded to the RFP for Real Estate Services. So I recognize most everybody from that meeting.
So of course, at that time, the board chose not to use a Realtor to list the properties. Now that we have two offers, Jeff has agreed to come and sort of assist and answer any questions you might have, but really, it's a discussion for the board and decision. There are obviously a number of options, you know, directions that we could go with this. Talking with him yesterday, you know, one idea could be to have the two interested purchasers just simply fill out a purchase agreement with their best offer one time instead of some sort of auction or back-and-forth negotiation, just to have them, now that they both understand there's two parties involved, to both make their both, best offer, you know, sealed and, and have a third party facilitate that, and then he would have the best offer on the table, and then the board could decide whether or not to take said, or neither offer. But any thoughts from the board, any questions? Obviously, there's, right now, we, the two offers are somewhat divergent in price, one is nine hundred and some odd dollars more than the other, otherwise, they're alike in every other. And there are obviously considerations to, you know, one offer was before the board first, and one came in later in the game, and that's a higher offer now. We have an absentee owner versus a township president owner. There's a number of considerations the board, I imagine, would want to discuss, but.
Do we have any obligation by law to go with the highest offer?
No.
Everything else is the same?
No. I, I mean, both offers right now deviate from what we listed. We've listed it for, we've given a listing price and said 150 REUs go with it in the assessments form, so both offers, while we're willing to consider those, we have no obligation. And that would clearly be communicated that, that best offer is.
I kind of like the idea of communicating to both that we've received multiple offers and, and, I mean, they can, asking them to resubmit, they can offer the same amount. Sometimes they do some things, they offer somewhat. But I think it, we give them a date, and we, we ask them to make their highest and best offer by that date. I've seen that done, I think that's, that's, in fact, a residential transaction recently where the seller had multiple offers over the list price, and asked all the, you know, there were five or six offers to give them their best offer. In the end, they, they were able to get the best, best price, so. That's the wrong doing. Sometimes people want to hold firm and say, no, that's the best I can do. But if they want it, maybe they'll reconsider what they want to do.
That's what I'm looking for, if there's a consensus from the board on a direction to go, if there are other thoughts or?
We're like, we're not in the real estate business or development business, so.
Whether we like it or not, but we're, we're happy to get out of it as soon as possible.
What other, what other approaches would there be?
We've, this is not uncommon. In fact, for the last five years, HUD, Fannie Mae, Freddie Back, they have had tremendous amount of properties, and how you handle a multiple offer situation is, it's procedural and it's formatic. It's important that there is no impropriety, everybody gets a fair shake, because any fallout typically comes from the losers in the, in the process. So as long as everything's kind of handled the same, everything is handled professionally, it's, it's our job to walk through that process. So hiring a third party, I'm not just saying this, but it separates you from that, that, that issue, and we accept that responsibility. It's kind of an interesting situation because we're coming, coming in at the eleventh hour. We've spoken to Mr. Wickman about possibly entering into an hourly basis to handle negotiations. What we have done in the past too is you've got a baseline of offer, and we've entered into a performance-based contract, taking a percentage of anything over that the process might generate, and typically, that's 20% on anything over. I would anticipate our fee to be roughly the same regardless of the situation, but a lot of times in a performance-based scenario, the perception is we've earned it as opposed to just billing hourly to get through the transaction. You've got three options. You can select one offer. None of these have been countered. It's our compunction that every offer should be countered. So you could select one and just counter and negotiate with that offer. If you go to a multiple bid situation, there are two approaches to it. One is the auction process where you accept the highest and go back to the other offers and say, we've got a higher offer, can you up your offer? And kind of stagger it that way. I don't think that's the best route to go. You've got some, some stale offers out there, and frankly, you want to respond quickly and get offers when they're excited. So we would recommend going the highest and best, obviously the highest priced, best offer. You are not under any obligation to take the highest price because it doesn't necessarily reflect the best offer to the township. And set a time limit on that. If it's handled evenly, all offers recognize that this is the end of the line, and we would expect higher prices coming in. But frankly, it's our main objection to make sure that the offers you've got do not rescind, because they can rescind, they can raise, or they could keep their offer the same. And it's our obligation to you to make sure that they stay in play and we get higher offers. You've really got only two variables price-wise. One is the price, the purchase price, and the other is the REUs attached that they're obligating. So it would be our goal to get either one or both of those up.
What would be your timeline when you, when you talk about, you know, doing something efficiently and effectively? A month? Weeks?
We would want to move quicker than that.
Quicker than that, probably more like a week to 10 days.
What, what we would need in order to begin this, because it is a negotiation, we would need to be under contract and given authority to negotiate on your behalf to enter that, that process. So really, it's just getting a, a service contract in front of you to authorize us to handle this process. From there, we would want to contact not only the offers you've got, but everybody that has shown interest in the property. That way, nobody can come out of the woodwork saying, hey, you didn't, didn't inform us. Again, that's a protective process. We would recommend getting a purchase agreement that is your purchase agreement out in the package with just a one-page solicitation, asking for price and REU, and attaching the purchase agreement. Not necessarily that they will accept the purchase agreement, but it gives them an opportunity to respond and give us notification of paragraphs that may or may not need negotiating after selecting one bidder and then negotiating with them. So to answer your question, we would want to move on this within, within two weeks to respond, and I believe one of the offers is currently out of town anyhow, but we would want to respond quickly.
Well, my thoughts are we would get a, a committee of Joe Petrucci, Joe Kellany, and Kathy Horning to work with our manager to come up with, because you have the expertise, you do this a lot in your business. Joe with your lawyer background, and Kathy with the financial from the township, work with James to come up with a plan if this got to happen quickly.
I, I don't know honestly that the plan is that, is, is complex. I mean, certainly, the committee can convene if we feel that's necessary. The steps that we've talked about are fairly easy that we can, between getting the township attorney to finalize documents, having professional providers put together the package, and then just have them submit. I would be handy enough, I'd be reaching out to both parties and make the segue and communication to the, to the real estate professionals, and then let them handle the process, and then the deliverable back to the board would be, here are the opened, the highest and best offers from the two parties. So I don't know, unless we want the committee to evaluate those offers before it comes to the board or?
As a resident that sits here making the decisions for our whole town, is our only concern how much money we can get from that property, or is it what possibly could happen to the property? Are there advantages to, you know, is our only consideration, how much we're going to get?
I think so. I think at the end of the day, if you're thinking of trying to control the development on that site.
I'm not saying control it, I'm saying the two offers that are out there right now weighing in on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we don't know what, but we know what the current zoning is and what the master plan is. That's, that's how we have to be guided by. I don't think, I certainly, that's going to be, take much longer, and you're probably going to scare your offers away. That's okay, that's fine, if you want to take that extra step, but I'm not sure what having, I agree with James, I don't see a committee needing to be formed on this issue. What I see is more of a, we've got to figure out what we're going to do in terms of the professionals. He's talked about a fee arrangement, either our percentage. He's talked about a fee arrangement, either our percentage, percentage over, maybe over what listed, what the listing price is or what the highest offer is within a certain range. I don't know. But I'd like to see those options and get those approved. I just, we know it, we know what it's zoned and we know what's, what's master plan. So, I don't know. I don't know. What are your thoughts Kathy? I don't, maybe I'm misunderstanding what you think, what you're thinking is...
Well, have you reviewed the offers already?
Well, certainly, it makes sense. I mean, obviously, there's been some interest in the other piece on 59 and what they're potentially proposing there does bring into some questions in that although it seems like they may be willing to offer what we're asking, what they're proposing to build there is probably going to be a great question and concern to everybody. And that's not the case here. We, both parties are planning to hold for future sale and development to somebody else, to a developer, you know, at the point they think the peak value is there. Otherwise, the interim use is to continue to farm it. And so we don't have, the current zoning on it is a general commercial. Obviously, there's a wide range of uses that could potentially be there and always could because that general commercial zoning has been in place on that property for quite some time as far as I can tell. And the master plan or the future land use for that is for planned development, research, development, light, industrial. And so between, there's obviously a wide range of uses that could potentially be there under those scenarios.
Joe, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I have a lot.
Thought you might.
It's my understanding that these two offers came to the township, they didn't come through any real estate.
Right, correct.
So now what's happening is you're asking to bring in a professional to do something that, please don't take this personal, but whatever your costs are, the price just went up in my mind. Because we, we got offers without a real estate. If we intended to have a real estate involved with this, we should have done it at the beginning. But these offers have come into the township, why isn't the township handling these things with our attorney to consummate the sale? I don't understand why we're bringing in a professional to pay a professional to do something that's already been done.
I've only brought in, should the board, I wanted to be prepared for if the board wanted to lead in that way. I'd gotten feedback from other board members that was opposite of what you're suggesting, and so we're prepared to go either way. If the board wants to move forward without a real estate professional, obviously the board can't. I'm just...
When we had this discussion at our admin meeting, I don't know enough about real estate transactions to, I want to make sure that we're doing everything the way they had to be done.
Well, we were just told by our manager that we don't even have to take the highest bid. So, you know, why are we now willing to pay, or not willing, nobody's voting on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why are we considering?
Our manager is not a Realtor.
Pardon me?
Our manager's not a Realtor.
No, I realize that, but we have an attorney that has real estate attorneys and they're foreign that can help us through the process. I don't understand why we would, we're going to get him involved anyways, regardless if there's a broker involved.
I'm not disagreeing with that. We have other properties that are going to be perhaps coming forward to us, and I want to make sure that we're following a process that's, that we agree with, number one, and if you have multiple bids coming in, I mean, do we do that on our own or do we have somebody that deals with this type of thing on a day-to-day basis?
I think we made that decision before, when we decided to list it ourselves, that we are going to handle this. Now we have people we can go to that are contracted with us to help us through that process, and we're going to do that, like I said, anyways. So I thought we already made that decision. But now, you know, I mean, how silly is that going to look to have a, for the sake of argument, say a $900,000 offer and now we're paying 20% out on that?
There was never any anticipation of that at all. I was looking, my suggestion at our admin meeting was we bring somebody to the table on an hourly basis that can help us through the process to make sure that we're following all the details when it comes to a Realtor's transaction with a buyer and seller.
And I would...
That was my goal, is that we don't drop the ball and then get ourselves into a pinch where none of us are experts.
And certainly, if the board wants to tackle that question first and whether you want to move forward with a real estate professional, that may be. It isn't necessarily my strong recommendation to go either way. It's what the board's comfortable with. If we are going to go forward, I would recommend that we do it based on hourly and not based on some sort of percentage. And I will say that that hourly rate is certainly less than what we pay our attorney hourly rate. So, you know, if we're choosing between two choices, I would...
I would have a question with that because even if we do pay the hourly rate, we're still, like Joe says, going to have to take it to our township attorney to review the documents anyways. Is that correct?
You would only be, and actually, we've already incurred the cost of having him draft the first draft of that purchase agreement. There isn't any, there's only a couple tweaks more left to do on it, and at that point, it's, we'll finish with the attorney's work. The type of work we're talking about is actually facilitating the process that's suggested here.
I think there is value using a professional, whether it's our attorney or Realtor, when we have multiple offers and the complexity, it isn't necessarily as simple as, you know, a residential transaction, it's a commercial transaction. There are considerations and contingencies typically that go along with the real estate transaction that I've been involved in, especially in a commercial, in a commercial or industrial situation, or in this case, it's mostly farmland, so it's probably not as a big issue. But the one thing that the gentleman has, and I apologize, Jeff, but Jeff had spoken, had indicated, it does keep things, when you have a third party kind of facilitating this, whether it be our attorney or Jeff or some other third party, kind of make sure everything is done on an even, even fair, everything is kept fair and the things that are looked at are looked at objectively and there's no subjective element that could come back and someone could claim that they got, you know, preferential treatment in some way. We do know that one of the potential buyers is somebody that, both are from the community in general sense, I mean, within the area, so...
One's from South Lion area.
South Lion area. Anyway, I just think that having someone also, Jeff, what Jeffrey talked about was looking at some of the other offers that had come in previously and advising them that we do have some interest in this, we are going to take a final bid and final offer, highest and best offer, and maybe that will generate even a better offer that we, that's currently on the table. So having a third party kind of take that, take the reins on that and champion that is probably something we should consider, whether that's our attorney or Jeff or some other Realtor or some other professional. I think it's a good idea, but I can go either way, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Well, I would, my feeling is, is if that's our goal is to get more money, that should, in my mind, that's the only reason to pursue pressure. We have two people that have made offers. They both knew that there was other people interested when they put their offer down on paper. One person gave a higher bid knowing what the other person's bid was, the other person came back in with a bid after that higher one had come in. So it seems to me that we have two bids that we could choose from right now. And, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not against getting the most we can get for it, but I also know that we've had people express interest in the past in properties of ours and we, you know, sat here and hemmed and hawed about if we could get more or if that, and...
Lost the opportunity.
Right, then the offers went away. And I don't want to see that happen again because we sit here and worry about getting a few extra dollars.
If I may, just, that certainly could be a valid consideration of the board. I don't want to mischaracterize the offer that was on the table as when the board clearly was not willing to accept previously. I don't know that it necessarily went away, it was, the response was, no, that's not anywhere near acceptable. I also, when the first gentleman put his offer in, he wasn't necessarily aware that somebody else had a pending offer. But then when he came back and has, he's signed the purchase agreement that the attorney has drafted, he's deposited the money for the title, with the title company, and he was aware then, of course, that there was this other offer out there. He did come in and ask uncertain of what he should do and somewhat acquiesced to, if I buy one more REU, then my offer is higher than his. Is that what I'm supposed to do? And, you know, I did pause his thought there and just say, let's have the board discuss its wishes moving forward before we get into, get too far into that. And so I don't want to mischaracterize his offer. He seemed somewhat willing to, okay, I'll just buy one more REU and that makes my offer higher and then do I, then do I get it and then can we be done with this? So just want to, I'd let him know that this conversation would take place before we, you know...
Are both of these offers cash deals?
Certainly, the second offer that came in is, and I believe the first one probably is, they of course have the option to assume the payment on the assessments. The purchase price of the land is cash. My guess is that the first buyer would pay off the assessment as well because he's made cash offer before, thinking that we would be motivated by that if he agreed to pay off the assessments. If he wants to pay off the assessments, save 5% interest, he likely would.
I agree with Larry.
I do too.
Well, I like the idea of, and I don't know how we're going to facilitate this, but, you know, go back to both parties and say, okay, give us a final offer and we'll decide from the final offer.
I think that would easily be done.
And that's reasonable to do because you got two offers and it would be proved on our part to, you know, go back and say, okay, even if they keep them the same, at least we got to do our share and, you know, negotiate a little bit, and that to me makes the most sense. How we're going to facilitate that either through the attorney or through a Realtor, that's something that we have to decide.
Personally, I think our attorney's already been involved, he's got the purchase agreement. It would be simply a letter, you know, make us your best and final offer, it closes on such and such a date and let him deal it, he's already got the purchase and we're done.
I agree with Kathy.
Matthew, do you have any observations or suggestions?
I think I agree with Joe that we made this decision a while ago, and I think that it's, I appreciate Jeff making the effort to come here tonight, and if we think there's going to be a lot of value in using his services to market the property in 59, then maybe we should reconsider that, you know, as a separate item. I think that the economy's changed quite a bit since they were here a little over a year ago, and, you know, that's evident because we are getting offers from different parties interested in the property. But as for the property at Clyde Road, I think we should just try to handle it in-house right now.
In-house being our attorney? With no more bids?
I think one, it's my idea, putting a final offer out there.
It wasn't my idea, but yeah.
Oh, you're agreeing.
I agree with everybody that's...
All right, and that's, and you agree with that? Joe, you don't agree with that? You don't agree with that? You think you should take the ones that's on the table right now?
I don't know if, I don't know if we can...
I'm hopeful going either way, but I, what I was pointing was, is...
Don't sit on it.
Yeah, we need to make a decision.
I don't think anybody's suggesting it, sitting on it. My suggestion was that I'm uncomfortable having us, I like the idea of a third party doing the negotiations and such, either an attorney or...
I don't know why we can't ask both parties to submit a last offer. They may not even do that, they may say, "My last offer was the last offer," then we know where we are and we make the deal. I don't understand why that's so difficult and we have our attorneys protect the township on the other end. What's so difficult about that? I mean, I agree with Larry. Sometimes you hold off and you try to get better and you end up getting worse, or you end up spending money you don't need to spend. I've seen that happen 100 times at the bank, 100 times, where they don't take an offer, they want to hold out, and they end up losing more than what if they were taking the first offer. See, I can't tell you how many times I've seen that.
The way it is right now, you've got two very close offers, so just put a letter out, just say, hey, just, you know, we've got two offers on the table, give us your best offer, we'll decide. We're not going to let this thing drag on, you know, forever in the bidding process. We just, one last offer, that's it.
And it's not all dollars, it's the offer itself.
Right, yeah.
It's what's, it's what's in the offer that makes sense for the township, not just the price.
Joe?
Is it my piece?
I don't remember what your piece was.
No, you should be a professional, one way or the other.
As long as we do it the right way.
I just want to make sure we do it the right way. I just don't want anyone, you know, we just want to be fair...
That's my concern, I want to make sure that it's being done by...
And we follow the right procedures, you know. I've been involved in a lot of real estate.
We haven't done a lot of this before. Matter of fact, I don't think we've ever sold a piece of property, have we? Since I've been on the board, I don't think we have.
Other than to ourselves.
Yeah, we sold, we sold the property for the...
For the buyer, yeah.
We sold a lot of property.
Back when it was worth a lot of money.
It was worth a lot at the time, but...
All right, I'll entertain a motion. I don't know if a motion's asked there, if we have consensus on the direction to go and...
But I do think we ought to talk to Jeff about the marketing of that 59 piece because we're getting interest into it, and my concern is, is that those who are buyers are going to take advantage of our lack of expertise in terms of handling a real estate transaction. And I think it would be wise for us to look at that.
Especially since we've got, I think, three parcels there. At least I know they're on two different sides of the road, and the ability to sell that property in its entirety and develop it properly is pretty important to me as opposed to piecemealing it because the offers can come in.
Okay, so there's consensus right now that James works with Mike Homier to put out a letter to the two current bidders that we're going to take a, one last bid. What's the timeline we want, 10 days?
I think less than 10 days. I think you want it by Monday or Tuesday.
We'll make a decision at our next board meeting.
I'd say by the 15th.
So we can make a, we can make a more, we can make a decision at our next meeting. So you would want to know by, see, today is...
What's our deadline for items to be on the agenda?
14th. Well, I mean, we could be flexible with that. If the board's willing to be flexible, that offer may come in even that day or the day before.
15th to Friday. No, he's saying we can be flexible up to that day.
If the board's willing to be flexible, I will, one of the purchasers is out of the country.
Oh, okay.
And I, and it was for a three-week time period starting maybe a week and a half ago, so let me, after...
Prior to our next board meeting?
Yeah.
Or do you want, would be that first meeting in December?
Yeah, let me touch base with his representative and see if it's possible for them to, I mean, certainly he can, they're able to communicate, just wouldn't have a original signature on something here.
I've bought real estate via fax before several times.
Yeah, he's in a pretty exotic location.
Okay.
If I can be flexible on the time and even if it's a matter of, I'm sure the board would consider it even a special meeting if necessary so that both, both parties have equal opportunity to submit, I may be able to get confirmation that that could be done by the Monday or the day... could be done by the Monday or the day of the meeting.
Okay.
I'll let, I'll keep the board in communication about that.
Just be aware, if you're having a special meeting, I'm getting a cornea transplant, and I need to be out the week, the 12th, 13th, and 14th, so I'll be back, though, for the meeting that Monday, Tuesday.
It would be, if anything, be after that, but I, I'll be hopeful that we can get it by the 19th, and I'll, I'll show.
Any other discussion on that line item?
Done, Hydeman and Joe.
Can we give direction to James to get an updated proposal?
Well, last time we went out for, we went, put out a request.
We had, yeah, we had an RFQ, and there were, there were a number, yeah, we could discuss this in strategic planning.
We can talk about this, not only, but probably at the retreat, because it's part of our strategic plan on Friday. Is that all right?
Yeah, I think so. I probably, I think I probably have some recommendation in that, too.
All right. Is Jeff around for the next topic, or is he?
I think that, I does appreciate his time.
Absolutely. We'd be more than happy to forward some of the forms we use to Mr. Wickman and see if that might aid in the process.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, yep. Item number 12B is sewer property listing prices. Manager Wickman?
I think, Ms. Supervisor, just needed to update. We obviously picked up three properties off Lone Tree at the tax foreclosure sale, and our intent would be to list those, and just, we've presented the same methodology we used on the other properties to come up with that listing price, and are just basically looking for consensus on that, on continuing that methodology and applying it to the Lone Tree property. No action necessarily taken. Our, our intent would not necessarily be to put a sign up on those properties, they're not visible to the public, but we certainly list them with the other ones, put them on CPICs, do what we've already been doing with the other properties that have gotten us offers, so, although that, those pieces are kind of on an island, and we'll see.
Well, it does bring up a question. A year ago, when you were looking at this, we did discuss the fact that the economy hadn't rebounded, it's not, it was, you know, we didn't know what the economy outlook, or the outlook of the economy was. We kind of had an idea, Joe, if you remember, talking about what real estate prices were going for, and what the outlook was. But it's starting, it seems to be, we're starting to see a change, and, and maybe it's, maybe we should consider having someone aggressively market these properties that we ended up acquiring, but I'm just throwing that out, something to consider. We looked at it before, we decided to hold on to it and just market it ourselves. We've got two offers on the Clyde Road. I'm just saying, maybe it's time we look at a commercial broker to aggressively pursue buyers. But, anybody, anybody have any different thoughts on that?
I think we're going to talk about this at our retreat on Friday, kind of try to get a strategy put together.
All right. How many acres are these three properties?
70 altogether.
And they're contiguous?
Yeah, 40, a 20, and a 10, yeah.
And is that, is there a road easement on Lone Tree Road through that? Is that the...
I don't know that it actually exists. It's probably more of a by adverse possession type easement.
Because it's an abandoned road?
Yeah, it used to be a public road, and...
It's, it's, it has not...
It hasn't been abandoned.
It is, is what they recall is a, a, a decertified road. The road commission has not abandoned it formally, but it doesn't maintain it, and it, and all it is is an easement.
So, you can use that as an easement to access that site?
Yes.
It's just pretty much unimproved.
Unimproved, unimproved.
That's your own risk.
Yeah. If you were to try and do something right there, the road commission, you'd probably still have to go back to the road commission if you're going to do anything. There is a problem, and Bob knows about it on the other side, that comes through with the neighborhood you live in, or over by your neighborhood. There's a guy that is, I know, doing some things over there, not supposed to...
We're on it.
You guys are on it?
Okay. So, the listing price of that is based on REU, is correct?
Well, the listing price is based on all of our costs into it to date, and then that would go up every year that we make an assessment payment, so...
All right, any discussion, any further discussion on that? I'm being none, we'll move on to item number 12C, which is our residential and site plan development guidebooks.
I like them. Just that I...
All in favor?
All in favor.
That's helpful to the public.
And that's what we're looking for, is just feedback. Obviously, they're not as pretty as we intend them to be when they're said and done. We have most of the content there, and that's what we're looking at, feedback on, is just another set of eyes. That needs would be resources for, whether it's our residents coming in and want to build a fence, or a pool, or a shed, or what have you, a simple one or two-page guide on, help them navigate the process that they need to go through, and then a more robust commercial development guidebook for a site plan, for those who would be submitting site plans, that, you know, take it through a logical navigation that you can't do in a zoning ordinance, no matter how neat, clear zoning is. So, this is a supplement to add value to those documents. We've been looking forward to this for some time, a lot of hard work's been put into it. We'd just like to get some feedback on anything you're seeing that we're missing the mark on, or, or you like it.
I was trying to find in here, did you have a provision when I was looking through this, and I, excuse me, but I went through it fairly quick, but shouldn't there be a disclaimer that these are guidebooks, and that any potential discrepancy that might be in these things, that the zoning ordinance governs? Do we run into a risk where we may...
This is not all...
This is not all of the, this is designed to provide basic information?
We can run that question...
By Mike?
Yeah.
Because I...
That sounds like an attorney question, that only your attorney would ask that.
Right, I think it's important, because what happens is, is in litigation, if someone relied on a guidebook, and yet they were, there was some aspect of the development that would be in violation of our zoning or, and planning ordinance, that the zoning and planning ordinance governs, we'd want some sort of disclaimer in here that, you know, the guidebook is designed to be more of a, a tool, not as, so I would run it by Mike, to include that in the guidebook.
James, do you know, when Dave brought this to the planning commission, they had some suggestions, do you know if those have been incorporated in?
I don't know if they had. My guess is that maybe they hadn't, but I couldn't, couldn't say for sure. I don't know the extent of those suggestions.
I know it gets too, probably gets too complex, but is there any way to put this like into a checklist form, too? This is what you have to do, and then if you were going to, say you're going to build a fence, you did this, you did this, did this, did this, did this.
We, yeah, it starts to break down in some of the processes. We've tried to do that through the, the map, and flow map, flow chart?
Yeah.
Format. And if any of you have, have seen recently, Livingston County put out a similar document for all of their permit processes, whether it be building, or drain, or whomever, road commission, that has a lot, a similar look and feel, a flow chart type format, some quick FAQs, just to simp, try to simplify things for the user on what, what does this process look like for me? I think that's as far as we've tried to take it. We probably could, and it, I'm sure would take a lot more work. So, that's maybe the next phase of this.
Okay. Any other questions on this, or comments? Being none, is there anything else on our agenda tonight, anybody needs to discuss or comments? If they're on, or any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Harper, second by Trustee Jermaine. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, aye. Motion carries.